Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and call to order our public hearing set to discuss the transfer of land located on the McPherson property. We've had an entertainment venue approach us and request that we give approximately four acres of property for the construction of an event venue. At this time, I will invite King Penn's Bowling and Family Fund Center LLC up, and you are welcome to go over anything. We got Don Mitchell here from the EDC, whoever wants to do their presentation, we are very much looking forward to seeing it.
David King, he and I have been working together. Most before, you know, make sure the deal is good, who's come watching, survey work, and then we'll watch, invest a lot, get background with this, so I'm just kinda turning over to him.
Okay, thank you.
I would update the wifi password for you.
I would, well, yeah, I probably have to show you all on an individual level because I can't get my stuff to transfer.
Do you know the last password? I don't know what it is.
He's just got the interior going with the lights.
Okay.
Get the gifts, does anybody know the gifts?
Yeah, I'll go get it, that's them.
Okay.
To me, that's not even the best picture. Until I get the password, I'll go there. Good evening, how is everybody?
Good.
I am doing well. My name is David King, and I live in Rimlap, and my family and I moved over here in two thousand. We moved out of Jefferson County for many reasons, but we wanted to move to a nicer place, and we picked Blount County, and we fell in love with where we live, and we're enjoying it. A little bit of background about myself is born to a coal miner and a waitress in Jefferson County, and grew up in Adger, and graduated from Oak Grove, graduated from Livingston University. And I've been bowling, my parents bowled in leagues, you know, pretty much their whole life, and got me started when I was little, and I started bowling in nineteen ninety, and I've been bowling in leagues ever since. So I've got thirty-three years' experience, I've bowled in over fifty houses all over the country in different tournaments, and I've really enjoyed the camaraderie and the sportsmanship and those things. And so I used to bowl in a place in Besford named Holiday Bowl, and it went under and moved around the different houses, and currently I bowl in Pinson, where the closest bowling alley is to us. My wife and I got this idea of inspiration for, you know, like I was telling the attorney, Mr. Alexander, that I attempted to buy Pinson, I attempted to buy that bowling alley from them, and they didn't wanna sell. So their loss is on the honor's gain, because I approached Don about possibly being able to build a facility here, because bowling is no longer about bowling. Bowling centers cannot survive on their own with just bowling. The other amenities that come with it are what help provide the financial structure for the unit. So that's where the other amenities come in to play, is the bar, the kitchen, you know, the good restaurant, arcade, the other facility, axe throwing, possibly laser tag. We have a lot of different things that we're gonna try to provide in this center. We're not gonna, we're gonna give enough for someone to come in and they could spend all day if they want to. Because we see the need in Blount County that there is no entertainment here, and we have to take our kids to another county to provide that fun, family fun that I grew up with, with my parents. I wanna give those memories to my kids and your kids and everybody's kids, as well as provide for the schools to be able to start bowling programs. Southeastern currently has a bowling program, and there's two hundred and nineteen colleges and universities across America that offer bowling scholarships, predominantly in ladies' sports, because it's an official NCA sport in the women's. But there are men's scholarships available too, and so one of our aspects is for outreach, to be able to reach and give an opportunity for more kids to get a good education. If we have some bowlers here that could provide for themselves a pathway to a better education, then that's what we're gonna help them do by offering each high school in the county, all seven, well, Southeastern already has one, the six other county high schools. Help provide them with laneage, where they don't have to pay, you know, regular price for lanes, shoes, balls, coaching. We're gonna have a pro shop that you can buy balls and shoes and all the bags and everything that goes with bowling, and you can come here, and we'll even have our pro shop guy be able to train these young youth, and give them another opportunity to explore the world from a different aspect than we currently have. We also have a special needs daughter, and being special needs parents, we wanna be able to provide a place for the community of special needs that we have in Blount County, because our daughter goes to Blount County Learning Center. And there's lots of kids there who are autistic, or they have sensory issues. We wanna be able to provide for them, once or twice a month, their family and all the brothers and sisters and their parents and grandparents to come, turn everything down, light, you know, don't have a lot of blinking lights, and turn the sound down, and let them have fun, you know, in a nice, safe environment. Like many other places that we have do at the Barron's Games, you know, they have sensory nights and things like that. We wanna do that too, and be able to provide that hopefully at no charge to the school or the people involved who have special needs. And so we have an opportunity to give something back to a county that's been good to us, and we wanna be able to provide that. And it's also a venture that can open other doors for other events later on, when you have a facility that's gonna be forty thousand square feet, you know, it's roughly an acre. You'll have the means to take things out and put things in. As things change, we'll be able to update the facility regularly with new games and new activities. And hopefully, if everything goes well, we might even expand to a bigger, larger bowling center and host state tournaments and college tournaments. And I wanna bring those things here for us, have something here that can be Blount County, that can be Onianna, so that we can, so we don't have to go and take our money to other places, other cities and other counties. Let's keep it right here. And that's basically my presentation on the whole thing. If y'all have any questions, I'd love to know if you've got something.
Do you have an estimate of what the revenue that would be generated?
Yes, after the first year, the gross revenue is estimated at, with the amenities that we have right now, is around two point four nine million, just under two and a half million. With the expected growth total over the next, within the next five years to be three point five. Then any other developments that may be coming in could just add to that. That's where lies the ability for expansion at some point. Because if we get a good foundation underneath us and get to be what we hope to be, then I feel as though we'll have a greater chance of drawing more people in that would require us to expand.
How many square foot did you say? A hundred?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand?
Yeah.
How many lanes?
It's gonna be sixteen lanes, so there'll be twelve lanes that are just, all of them will be open to the public, but there'll be twelve lanes of just public. Then there'll be four VIP lanes with four adjacent party rooms, for church gatherings, birthdays, holiday, whatever holiday get-together, corporate meetings. Those four adjacent rooms will have accordion doors, or accordion walls, that you can fold back into the wall to expand them and make them bigger, and those will roughly be forty by forty square feet spaces.
How much square foot is sixteen lanes, do you know?
It's roughly ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
Yeah.
So you're giving yourself a good thirty thousand for your kitchen?
Yes, kitchen, bar, on all the other things is three quarters of the building. So the bowling is just one quarter of the entire project.
I think you and I talked already.
Possible.
I got a little bit of a background in bowling myself. I worked at Trustville for about the last twenty years for security.
Okay.
And so I've seen it, I've seen it when it was built, and Miss Payne had it.
Yeah.
And if I have any advice whatsoever, don't let family work for you.
I know all about that situation. It actually, not knowing all the insides of what happened, it actually scared me away and delayed me for about a year because I didn't have proper information. But once I got the information of what happened, I went ahead and moved with this quickly, so that's a whole nother story for a whole nother city. We didn't even know about that. Yeah, it's not.
Mr. King, what is your projected timeline for the project as far as completion and opening?
The, I hope to, with the approval and everything with the property, is to begin the break around in a hundred and twenty days. And fast track would be from that point, ten to fifteen months to completion.
Do you plan on using, are you partnering with Brunswick?
No, actually, I'm partnering with US Bowling Corporation. They have a brand-new, state-of-the-art system. And it's on the video that I can show y'all. I don't have the ability to cast it, or I would, but, so they have this, that was just like two weeks ago. It was officially accepted as a competitive surface, the machinery and everything in the USBC, United States Bowling Congress, and has a special competition waiting for this equipment. That's gonna allow you to, I mean, you can compete at a regular USBC level on this equipment. They've been working on it for over a year, and the state-of-the-art equipment has string pin setters. It actually, there's very little maintenance on the equipment, and the, it sounds hokey, but it really is, and I actually bowl on it, it's really good. But it allows for a, the entire system is twenty-four volts. So the old systems, you well know, it's four eighty. So we're talking about a massive cost saver in energy and efficiency for, you know, that makes, that brings the carbon footprint down, not that I am worried about that, but the amount of, it has seventy-six moving parts, as opposed to well over two hundred and eighty for a regular Brunswick machine. And so it eliminates downtime and maintenance and things like this, that slows the, when you go to a normal house, things that break and things that they have to fix.
Have you, have you, did they do your feasibility study?
Yes, they partnered with me on the feasibility study.
Okay.
And so with just the bar, kitchen, bowling, arcade, and axe throwing, is what that, that number of two point four is just those amenities. But we have space for up to four more amenities in development. We're trying to figure out what's best to put in there, not only people want, but also what would drive up revenue for the second.
About in twenty nineteen, I went on a six-month, maybe twenty eighteen, I can't remember the exact year, but a six-month ordeal with Brunswick, went to Oklahoma City for their, spent five grand on the feasibility study. You can have it if you need it. This is a little old, this is from twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, and almost did this before I was on the council, and it's a great idea, and it was feasible back then. And we were only talking about ten lanes, and this is a great, great-looking facility, and I happen to know a little bit about it. The other thirty thousand feet that you're talking about is where all the money's made.
Yes.
And the other stuff is, the way you described it with the schools, and that's the exact same business plan that Brunswick had given us. On the two point four million, I know you don't charge taxes on time and labor and things of that nature, and I know bowling, renting the lanes, how much of that two point four percent do you plan on, would be taxable?
Somewhere in the, I don't even know if I have the numbers with me, it's probably in the one point four million range, taxable.
What's your total capital investment?
I have an angel investor that is working with me on this, and the facility itself is gonna cost somewhere between, a rough estimate as of right now, between five and a half to six million dollars. And it's going to be just state-of-the-art. I don't know whether building in Moody, but it's probably not gonna be comparable to what we're gonna have right here.
Somebody else have any other questions?
How many people do you anticipate hiring?
Well, we're hoping to, depending on the other amenities involved, somewhere in the range of twenty. It just depends on what the other, some of those amenities you can just let public go in, some of them you may have to have a staff member there present, so somewhere in the area of twenty.
So just to kind of put it out there, I think what, if this is approved, the next step, as you all know, at the last council meeting, you guys get the authority to enter into an option agreement with the developer, which has taken place. And they are currently reviewing the entire site, the site that they are looking to potentially develop, and including the footprint of this facility within that footprint. So what would happen is, we would get those renderings back of where they recommended it be placed, converse with you, make sure that the placement of the facility, your facility, works for your business plan with how they've laid it out. If it does, then we will have the property surveyed and have the parcel that would house your facility parceled out, and then that's what would be transferred to you for your use.
Yep.
Is that how everybody understood it to me?
Don, have you heard from them?
I've talked with them about a few other things, but I haven't seen one.
I haven't seen, they, he emailed me last week and said that he hoped to have one this week or next week.
We're, my, he's mainly giving me all some information, so I'm trying to, I had relationships with the town, I had a couple of people step forward and ask me directly, so I told them they gotta do it these ways. We're not doing this ourselves, until it works out. One of the developers, the food team guy, one of their people does field work, they eat, and we're almost done, so you guys have to come on to us. At least work.
Yeah, okay, well, good deal.
One other thing I failed to mention, not to hijack, the, what we're planning on doing in the bar, you can see from the other picture, is having an indoor-outdoor, closed-off fence out from the public. That we'll also have a stage set up for live acts that we can have come in, as well as karaoke, you know, anything to bring people in that they'll have fun doing, that's what we're planning on doing, and providing that environment for folks, so. An indoor-outdoor facility that you can actually have the man outside or inside, depending on, we all know our weather is crazy. It'll be a covered patio, too, I guess I should've mentioned that, too, just a clear covered patio, with roll-up doors, much like you've seen a lot of restaurants go to have these roll-up doors, like old ice houses you used to have back in the day, where you could just open the doors and mingle in it out, so. Some of these things come to me, I've got it written down, but.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that community desperately needs and has asked for quite some time, so I think it's a very exciting venture.
And it's been hard to keep it quiet, my idea, when I see things on Facebook, on what's happening in Blount County, and people asking for things, and, you know, why don't we have anything to do? And I just wanna get on there and just start typing, you know, can't do it.
It's hard.
Don stole it. And my wife, my wife is a hairdresser. She's been a hairdresser for thirty-plus years. Do you know how hard it is for a hairdresser to sing? She has been on me about this, so we hope that you have, that you have faith in us, because we have faith in y'all, and we'll just carry this on together. And provide a, provide something for us to be proud of. I figure that we can hang our hat on at the end of the day.
I told Dave that I grew up bowling, and my father was a bowler, and to his dad, he said that the breakdown in the family union was attributable to the decline in popularity of bowling.
Timeline first.
The way I did, I told the mayor, the center, which is much smaller population-wise than we are, has, they've just built a, it can't be sixteen lanes, what have they got up there?
I think it's eight.
Eight, it's not me, it's a small building, but at least, you know, there's enough interest in it to, a smaller community development, so we're ready for it.
Well, I know that the arcade, the arc-
They say the family structure, too, yeah.
Yeah, could. I mean, it helped save mine. My parents were not very nice to each other, so. The only time they were nice were on the bowling. And my dad was actually the best bowler in my family. I wish I had his talent, but he got his leg crushed at work, yeah, and so he couldn't bowl anymore, so, but I, my mother was still better than me too, so. But as far as the arcade, you know, we're looking at, with the feasibility, they provide about two hundred dollars per square foot, so we're gonna, we're going to expand. Part of what, we started that at two hundred by one fifty, the size of the building, but we expanded, add to the arcade side, because we wanna provide something, more along the lines of David Buster's. Adults and kids, separate, we're separate, but not in the same, not in the different rooms, just separate all in the same room, so that you can go in there with your kids, and while they're playing things, and then you can go over and play the adult games if you want to. We'd even thought about possibly one of those places being just a VR, you know, just virtual reality, just a room with nothing but virtual reality arcade games in it.
Are you partnering up with a game vendor or buying those yourself?
We'll be purchasing everything outright.
And are you gonna have pool tables?
Yes.
Do we still have an ordinance about nineteen on that?
I think that's just in a pool hall.
Okay.
I don't think it would apply to this facility.
We're hoping to provide a large enough space for multiple pool tables, you know, to have tournaments, you know, because I used to shoot in the APA, and they, of course, they have another one now, that's a big, you know, thing, where people can have their own pool tournaments, or teams that come in and provide, you know, play. We wanna provide anything that you could do in another county around us, we wanna do it. We want, we don't wanna, but we wanna do it inside our footprint. We don't wanna do too much and not be, not have the proper revenue. We wanna just do what we need to do to provide the services that we wanna provide. As well as darts, there's a lot, there's communities out there of game players that I have no clue about, that darts are such a, there's tons of folks that enjoy darts, and they have leagues and tournaments, and we're gonna have bowling leagues, we're gonna have pool leagues around dart leagues, if the community-
Anything we can gamble on, right? I'm just kidding, just kidding.
If it happens, and I don't wanna-
You didn't see.
I don't wanna know.
Well, Greg, does anybody have any other questions for?
The bar is gonna have large TVs inside for that, as well as the lanes. The way the lanes are set up, a pair of lanes are roughly eleven and a half feet wide. There'll be an eight-foot tall, ten-foot wide TV screen behind a pair of lanes, so all sixteen lanes will have, there'll be eight large TVs.
Like Trustville.
Just, yes, just like Trustville. Nothing they've got will be better than what we have. I'm just gonna say that, right?
Well, if there's no other questions, thank you so much for your time, and it looks like a fantastic facility.
And I do have a couple of videos that if anybody wants to see, and it just kinda gives you an idea of what it's gonna look like. It's not gonna be exact, because we're-
Yeah, let's see.
Coach teams, but if, you know, if anybody wants to see it, that's great. I'm not sure. It says I'm offline, so apparently maybe a little bit. I'm working my head.
Got a good beat to it, yeah.
My daughter, she's on COVID, she's a server bowling, she's in there going. She can't wait to be able to bowl too, so. And that's one of the things about bowling is, anybody can do it. Doesn't matter how good you are or how bad you are, handicap, non-handicap, you know, anybody can bowl. So it's wonderful for everybody, and it's really allows families a great time to come in, and, you know, they come in and maybe their lanes aren't ready, that's when they go get something to eat, or something to drink, or play some arcade games, and, you know, it gives you just a whole, a whole night of fun that you can have, and we'll be able to do it right here, which I think is great.
The images, lastly, I guess, the images that you have there that you haven't put up or whatever, if I can, give you my email address?
Yeah.
And when the mayor says it's okay to do so, or if you could email them to all of us, I think we'd all like to post it, if everything works out.
If it's a perk, then I don't see why it couldn't be posted.
Whoever's in charge of that, I'll send it to one of you, and you know, this person.
That's good.
Or I'll send it to all of you. This one and that one are my favorite ones, because they actually show a little more definition.
Here one.
I'll send it to Robbie.
I'll forward it there, bud.
All right, does somebody else have any other questions before we close the public hearing? Thank you so much for your time and all your hard work, and for wanting to bring this to Onianna and Blount County. We're grateful.
Thank you.
I think it will be a huge success, and I know that I can't wait to go bowl, because I love to bowl, I'm not good at it, but it's something that I definitely enjoy to do.
Doesn't matter if you're good at it or not.
I've got bumpers for your lanes. They got bumpers for your lane. Me too.
No shame in my game.
But it's gonna be a super live show event for you to go to, and, you know, I can't wait either. That's why we wanted to go ahead and make this happen, without having to wait on someone else.
Well, thank you. So if there's no other comments or questions at this time, then I'll close our public hearing, and we'll, we can immediately go into the work session once we can get the video off and up and running. Okay, so we'll go ahead and go straight into our work session. Item number one and two, the invocation and the pledge we do in the regular course of every council meeting. Item number three is to consider approving the minutes of the April twenty-fifth council meeting. I hope everyone received those minutes and had an opportunity to review them. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes?
Did we, did we update the, what, you and I talked about the price on-
Oh, I never even mentioned it. No, I didn't. Don pointed out that I believe the property for Hometown Bank, it has in there that we're gonna sell it for sixty-five, and it should be sixty-nine.
Yeah, other than that, that's-
We'll make that change. I'm sorry, Amanda. He called, we talked about it, and it just went out the other side of my head. Thank you, Mr. Bradley, for that. Then we'll consider authorizing me to enter into an agreement for the transfer of approximately four acres located on the McPherson property to King Penn's Bowling and Family Fund Center. That is the public hearing that we just entertained. Seems like a very exciting venture. Any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, item number five, I'll have Mr. Alexander go over this for us in the council meeting. There are some surplus items from the Public Works Department that we'll read off, and they'll be listed on there for that department to surplus. And then also, I'll ask Mr. Bradley to do the same for some surplus items regarding the park and rec department. Surplus items are things that normally occur throughout the year when they have unused items and things that are no longer of use, and they'll then surplus them. Item number seven, consider appointing Manuel Vegas to the zoning board of adjustments. We do need an alternative. Someone, if a member of the board that cannot be in attendance, then the alternate would come and be able to sit in for that. He expressed interest in that position. Any comments or questions about five, six, or seven? Item number eight, Scott Payne is back. The fire chief has requested that we consider hiring Mr. Payne as a part-time firefighter. Um, he has certainly, um, shown his, uh, ability to be a very effective firefighter who has many years of service to Oneonta, so I think he would be a great, um, addition to their, their part-time, uh, group of men and women for the fire department. We'll have our Chamber of Commerce, Commerce report and then each one of our departments will have their report, fire, library, park and rec, police, and public works. We like to have that at least once a month, just so everybody kind of knows what each department has been up to and update the community on what's been happening within those departments. Um, any, any questions or comments on eight through fourteen? Then we'll have Ms. Alcorn, City Administrator, report and then my mayor will report. Um, and then just as a reminder, our next council meeting will be next Wednesday, May seventeenth. We did have to reschedule that for, uh, a conflict in schedule and also we have an individual coming to speak to us. And that was the only day that we, that they had in their schedule that they could come. So does anybody have any, any questions, comments, additions, anything they'd like to add before we close the work session? Well, then we will close the work session and we can immediately go into the council meeting once we get the, the video ready and up. All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up our regularly scheduled council meeting. Mr. Bradley, would you do this to the honors of the invocation?
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening just asking for your leadership and your guidance and your mercy on our, on our meeting as we get ready to conduct our business here this evening. We pray, Lord, that you'll just be with us as we go about this evening. We pray that you'll just be with every family represented here. Watch over and guide us. Keep us in good favor. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, if there are no, uh, comments regarding item number three, consider approving the minutes of the April twenty-fifth council meeting. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April twenty-fifth council meeting with the correction.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 I'm saying, yes.
Yes, and the motion will carry. Um, item number four, consider authorizing Mayor Richard Phillips to enter into an agreement of the transfer of approximately four acres located on the McPherson property to Kingspin Bowling and Family Fund Center. Uh, there's no further discussion on that matter. We have had a public hearing and also discussed it in, um, our agenda review. If there's no further discussion or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, um, authorize you to enter into an agreement to transfer approximately four acres to the McPherson property to Kingspin Bowling and Family Fund Center.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Um, item number five, uh, we have some surplus items in the Public Works Department. Mr. Alexander?
Um, yes, sir. We have a resolution number zero five two three dash zero one, resolution approving surplus for the Oneonta Public Works Department. It reads as, whereas the city of Oneonta, Alabama, has certain items of personal property which is no longer needed for public purpose, and whereas section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorized the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Oneonta, Alabama as follows. Section one, the following personal property owned by the city of Oneonta, Alabama is unusable for public or municipal purposes and hereby declared surplus to the needs of the city. One, two thousand and nine Bobcat Model T three twenty compact track loader, the serial number is on file. Uh, one, two thousand and three Ford Ranger pickup, the VIN number is also listed. Section two, the city of Oneonta shall properly dispose of said items and such items shall be taken off the city inventory. Adopted and approved this ninth day of the, of May two thousand twenty-three, Richard Phillips, Mayor. And if there's no questions, I'd like to, uh, put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion will carry. Um, item number six, um, concerning the park and rec department surplus, Mr. Bradley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read resolution number zero five two three dash zero two. It's a resolution approving surplus for the Oneonta Park and Recreation Department. Whereas the city of Oneonta, Alabama, has certain items of personal property which is no longer needed for public purpose, and whereas section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorized the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Oneonta, Alabama as follows. Section one, the following personal property owned by the. The, the following personal property owned by the city of Oneonta, Alabama is unusable for public or municipal purposes and hereby declared surplus to the needs of the city. Nineteen ninety-eight Ford F-one fifty extended cab pickup truck with VIN number on file. Section two, the city of Oneonta shall properly dispose of said items and such items shall be taken off the city inventory. Adopted and approved this day, ni- ninth of May, twenty twenty-three, Richard Phillips, Mayor. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put that in the form of a motion?
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion will carry. Also, if, uh, anybody would like to see a list of those surplus items, uh, you're welcome to get that list from City Hall. Item number seven, consider appointing Manuel.
Yagus.
The Yagus to the zoning board of adjustments as an alternate.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Manuel Yagus to the zoning board of adjustments as an alternate.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion carries. Item number eight, Ms. Pierce?
Um, as we stated in the, um, work session, Scott Payne, who recently retired, um, uh, we, we would like to request tend to be rehired as a part-time. Um, we're in need of a part-time firefighter. Scott's actual, ob- obviously well-qualified, obviously wonderful, wonderful firefighter. And it would save us money on any, um, items or uniforms or anything like that. So I would like to put that in the form of a motion that we rehire Scott Payne as a part-time firefighter.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion will carry. Chamber of Commerce? She gets a pass, you just have to pay. Um, all right, Ms. Pierce, our, our fire report? Or Chief, Chief?
One kid saw her practice, got canceled, so I let her make it. Uh, good evening. Um, last month, I had a hundred and fifty-eight responses, um, during the month of April. Um, twenty-four overlapping calls, meaning we had two calls go out at the same time. Um, yesterday we had three go out within about an hour. Um, so just the continuous, um, multiple calls and just, just to note, I know I put it in the report last month and I wasn't here. So most of our, when we do our calls, even if we put every fire truck on, in the city, on that call, that's one, still only can be one response for us. So, multiple units, multiple vehicles is still, by the way we have to code for national requirements, it's just still one incident. So, four fire trucks, one fire truck, one person, it's still an incident, even if it involves twenty people or just one or two. Um, submitted a grant request, uh, to Walmart for fifteen hundred dollars for firefighting equipment. Um, I haven't heard anything about, back about that. We're just gonna use it for just general purposes and equipment, uh, that we need to replace. Of course, hired Thomas full-time, um, working with, uh, Dalton Farmer, updating job descriptions. Most of them haven't all completely been updated since two thousand and nine. Uh, some of them were done two thousand and seventeen, so I've worked on those. Um, I sent them out to my policy review committee, um, get some feedback from them, then hopefully have them ready to present to y'all. Probably only next week, probably the first, uh, council meeting in June. Um, just upgrading everything based on policy and the sergeant position, which wasn't in there. Uh, worked with the water board to get, uh, still trying to get some pricing back on getting all the hydrants stripped. If you looked around, drive around town, they all look chipped and faded and instead of us go out there and scrub them with a brush, we're trying to find a company that will cut there and clean them for us and then we'll repaint them. Um, Quacko Grant's going in the end of this month. I'm waiting on a, I got a letter of support from the Blonte County Fire Association for that. Um, multiple personnel have attended, uh, classes, Fire Strictor One here in Oneonta. We've got a class coming up this month. Um, August, September, and November here in the city, uh, and all those are people coming in, taking classes, um, representing the city well and as people come out and spending money in, in the city as well. And then the, those classes that we charge for, the fire college requires us to charge for, we get thirty percent of that funding back directly into the fire department. So it's a good thing when we teach these classes that we have to, they have to pay for. The way state law's set up, that's how we do it. They make us do it and Alvolet lets us use their training center, uh, rights. And they just, they don't keep any of it, they just give it to us. So that's a very gracious thing that they do for us. Um, we, uh, actually last week got all of our trucks pump tested. They all passed. Uh, B-shift, some of Quentin Williams fixed one of our trucks, uh, himself instead of getting a part. It probably saved us, the part itself was five hundred dollars, well, I was quoted, and then labor, probably a thousand bucks. He saved us, uh, doing it himself on, on the clock. So he just, he was like, hey, can I fix this? I was like, if you want to do it, go for it. So he did. Uh, we're in the process of move, finally got some stuff lined up to move the training facility over, so, uh, Chief could have his longer range. And we're supposed to start re-erecting that tower tomorrow. Once we get that thing established and set up, we'll be able to work on a annual, uh, physical, firefighter physical, basically a p- a physical test. But I need the tower erected to be able to do that. Um, beyond that, uh, after I submitted this, I met with St. Vincent's Occupational Health. Um, it's been a few months coming, trying to get with them to meet and sit down about NFPA physicals. That's something I'll be putting in next year's budget. Um, had some really good discussions and things that they've caught and actually saved employees' lives by doing the physicals. So, um, hopefully I'll get all that information back this week and then I can submit it, uh, into the October budget. So all of our firefighters will have an NFPA compliant physical, uh, on an annual basis. Looking to be about three hundred and fifty dollars per person per year, was the top of it. And then finally, um, over the weekend, after I submitted this, um, I guess some of y'all seen, you've got Facebook, um, anything like that. Uh, Sergeant Crowe was just driving down the street, uh, found, came, actually saw smoke, got to a, uh, house, uh, I don't know if it was San Valley Road. And literally just went there and drug a guy out. He said it was very poor visibility. Um, the victim actually, as of the day before yesterday, was still innovated. So he was awake and oriented on the scene, became combative, and they took him to hospital. As soon as he got there, they did x-rays, found burns, innovated him, and he's still, I believe, still in the hospital. Um, but it just goes to prove, um, I've told a lot of people and I tell those guys that they are, they are a step above a lot of other fire departments and firefighters in the state that I've interacted with. So, um, I'm grateful for them, grateful for the city's support, and that's all I've got. There's some amazing questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, G.
Item eleven, our library report, Mr. McAlpine?
In the month of April, uh, the library is open twenty-four days. We've got seven thousand three hundred sixty-four books in circulation at this point. Average daily circulation's three oh seven. Uh, computer use is a thousand and twenty-five, uh, different users. I guess those are unique, unique users to the computer. Uh, we had two thousand four hundred twenty-two library visits in total, which is huge for a city our size. Reference transactions, seven hundred and sixty library programs. They conducted twenty-two of those. Program attendance during those programs were two hundred and thirty-one. The conference room was used forty times. We got nineteen new NIP library members and, uh, proctored one test. We're waiting on a response for a two thousand dollar summer reading grant from the Dollar General Literacy Foundation. Uh, we also submitted a grant to APLS for new children's computers. That grant will be awarded or denied around August. Uh, the summer reading program is coming up in the month of June with programs for all ages.
Excellent, thank you. Item number twelve, our park and rec report, Mr. Bradley?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is updates as of May the fourth. Oneonta Youth Cheer, there's a total of sixty-two registered for the cheer for the twenty twenty-three football season. Uh, they're finishing up a fundraiser next week and the fundraiser's, uh, intended to help with the cost of uniforms. Uh, the contact and flag football registration began April the first and it will end May the thirty-first. As of now, there's only thirty-two kids registered for contact and fifteen registered for flag, but they anticipate those numbers are gonna go up as we get closer to the deadline. Uh, you can register in person at the rec center or online at onianal dot recdesk dot com. That's onianal dot R-E-C-D-E-S-K, recdesk dot com. And they have a new phone number they'd like for me to make sure everyone has. It's area code two zero five, three seven nine, eight six seven five. And they also have Facebook. You can visit them on their Facebook page.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bradley, for that report. Um, item number thirteen, our police report, Ms. Underwood or Chief Cliff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start out by saying, uh, what a good job that was by firefighter Crowe. We're very blessed to have some very, uh, brave public safety, uh, servants here in the city and I saw that the other night and thought it was wonderful. So, uh, the police department for the, uh, month of April, we had a hundred and forty-four traffic stops that culminated into seventy-nine citations issued. We've done twenty-seven, uh, non-UTCs, which those are the parking tickets and, uh, things of that nature, grass, uh, ordinance violations. Had forty-five arrests. We served forty warrants. Had seven hundred and ninety-three calls for service that culminated into, uh, one thousand three hundred seventy-four total reports and items, uh, generated throughout the, the month of April. Our investigation division, um, checked a hundred and eighty-one reports, investigated a hundred and twenty-six cases, closed a hundred and twenty-one, made nine arrests, and obtained twenty-eight arrest warrants. Uh, some of the other things that are going on, I'd like to thank this, uh, particularly Ms. Alcorn for approving the, uh, and the mayor for approving the flock cameras. You know, I know, uh, Donald's very familiar with these, but these are LPR, license plate reader cameras that are gonna really enhance the safety of the ci- uh, city there and catch the license plate. Of people coming into our city, going out at every, uh, every area other than some of the, the really small roads. And this is gonna be very impactful for, uh, crime prevention and or solving crimes that occur in the city. So I'd like to thank you for that. We did obtain the Walmart grant, uh, for five thousand dollars that went toward our existing LPRs and I was proud that, that we were able to get that. Uh, because I thought it was only gonna be for the fire department this year, but Walmart stepped up and, and gave us, uh, an additional amount of money. We, we appreciate them, of course, uh, for doing that. Uh, if you have, don't have any questions, this is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And Mr. Alexander, our public works report?
The following is a list of completed projects performed by the, uh, Public Works Department. Uh, the sixth through, uh, April through the ninth for this month. Filled potholes throughout town, performed regular vehicle maintenance, began mowing grass right-ofways throughout town, began spraying for weeds throughout town. Push-off excerpts, filled dirt at brush dump, responded to seven animal control calls, performed regular airport maintenance duty. Uh, performed regular building maintenance, reset red lights. Uh, started nursing classroom retrofit project at the main campus of Wallace State. Performed regular garbage brush pickup throughout town, repaired streetlights, moved topsoil from the dump to dump from the baseball park project. Um, performed weeding state highway routes, began, um, cutting brush debris in the big, uh, drainage ditch. Uh, mowed the airport, assisted with citywide cleanup day, sprayed for weeds throughout town, continued sign replacement. Began the pipe replacement on, at Twin Oaks Drive, removed and replaced hydraulic cylinder on crane truck. Uh, repaired alley drainage between Fourth and Fifth Avenue and First and Second Street. Displayed heavy equipment for the career day at Oneonta City Schools. Installed, uh, uh, window glass curtain at the one-ten building, repaired airport lights, performed fire extinguisher inspection for all the city buildings. Uh, rewired swimming pool, uh, pump and repaired, uh, the sink at the senior citizen building.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. All right, um, Ms. Alcorn, our City Administrator, report?
The only thing I have, I just wanted to commend the Public Works, uh, Department for their efficiency and timeliness on repairing the pipe replacement at Twin Oaks Drive in Pine Brook. That subdivision only has one way in and one way out, so they really needed to get it done in a day and they managed to do that. And so I just wanted to let everyone know the great job that they did.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have.
And then for my report, I just want to commend Matt Crowe on a wonderful, um, job that he did. I, I, I know that he is one of those that thinks he's just doing his job, but he saved that man's life. And, um, we are so lucky to have, um, public servants like him in our public safety that act quickly. And they're before the grace of God, you and I, that couldn't have been one of us. So it's good to know that, that we have police and fire. go you and I, that could've been one of us. So it's good to know that, that we have police and fire that are ready to act. Um, coming up this Saturday is our, we kick off city night market again. It will be from six to nine. Um, the pool will open, as it always does, on Memorial Day weekend, the Saturday of Memorial Day. We have, um, an adequate number of managers and lifeguards this year, so there should not be, um, any problem with staffing. Um, and things are going well. I'm very excited about the bowling alley project and look forward to that moving forward. Um, does anybody have any updates or any statements they'd like to make before we adjourn?
I would just like to mention, this doesn't have to do specifically with the city, but, um, Spring Valley Beach, we have all the lifeguards we need, right? If we get any more applications, uh, they are desperately looking for additional lifeguards. So, uh, had a talk with him today, and, um, you know, if we could turn them in his direction, he's hiring certified lifeguards.
Yes, we'll absolutely do that. We've actually had two reach out.
Okay.
I can go back and.
Thank you.
Toward Spring Valley Beach, it's good to know. Anybody else have anything they'd like to update us with? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, and we.